Good morning. It's Tuesday, May 3rd at 9:30 a.m. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
All right. And we've got minutes.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Do we have any public comments regarding resolutions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. We do. We're lucky to have some individuals with us. We have some commendations. Do you have a commendation honoring Holly Helmick-Sprall as Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year? Whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Holly Helmick-Sprall of Lodi, Ohio, has been recognized as Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year for 2022 by the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County. And whereas Holly, the canteen manager for American Legion Post 523 in Lodi, and non-veteran who has been an extraordinary support for Lodi veterans, their families, and their wider community. And whereas Holly has in three short years increased the financial stability of Post 523 Tenfold, greatly increased its funding for charitable giving, while planning and coordinating numerous programs to garner more veteran and veterans' family support at the post. And whereas Holly works tirelessly on behalf of Legion Post 523 in support of New Bridge Place, a local homeless shelter that houses 15 veterans, filling needs where they exist, and implementing and adopting a veteran program for Christmas season, as well as take care of widows of veterans to ensure they are not forgotten in the veteran community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Holly Helmick-Sprall for her outstanding dedication to the well-being of veterans in Lodi and the greater Medina County community to instill the spirit of Americanism, compassion, and camaraderie in their veteran community. Be it further resolved that the Board of Medina County Commissioners commends Holly Helmick-Sprall for receiving recognition as the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year Award.
Mr. Helmick, Miss Holly cannot make it, but the post commander is here to accept on her behalf.
Thank you. Post Commander, please come forward.
Brian, Brian can use your camera to take a picture.
Oh, I have nothing to do with that. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But thank you so much for coming.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Notice I put the microphone down. That's okay. All right, we have another.
Dave will give a speech.
We do have another commendation honoring David LaFey as Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran of the Year. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that David LaFey, Medina, Ohio, has been recognized as Medina County Veteran of the Year for 2022 by the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County. And whereas David is American Legion Post 202's longest-serving commander in its 103-year history. And whereas David had led the annual poppy sales for 11 years and turkey raffle committee for 13 years, both programs which have raised over $30,000 in funds to help county veterans, as well as participating in the Legion Honor Guard for eight years. And whereas David has served during the last three years as American Legion of Ohio Fifth District First Vice Commander, supporting all Legion posts in Medina County and serving for the past 11 years as a Veteran Service Officer for the Medina County Home, as well as serving for the past nine years as Legion Post 202 Chairman for Buckeye Boys State, including visiting high schools throughout Medina County to encourage participation, as well as serving as a state trustee of Ohio Buckeyes Boys State, spending a week each summer at Miami University helping to supervise approximately 1,100 young men in the annual program. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor David LaFey for his outstanding dedication and service to the veteran community of Medina County and the state of Ohio with his efforts to serve the veterans of Medina County in many capacities. Be it further resolved that the Board of Medina County Commissioners commends David LaFey for receiving recognition as the 2022 Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran of the Year Award. David, please come forward.
Eat your technology and work day.
Do you want to say a few words?
No comment.
Okay.
I just want to say thanks to my wife who puts up with last minute. I gotta leave now. I'll have supper when I get home. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
We do have, I don't see Steve Christman. We do have a commendation that would be commending the Skills USA 2022 National Signing Day, honoring and encouraging graduating seniors who have chosen to pursue a career as a professional in the skilled trades. And I know we'll be presenting these on Thursday.
On Thursday, yeah.
So, all right. With that, we'll go ahead to our resolutions. Andy Conrad's office, county engineer. How are you doing?
Howdy.
Good morning, Dan.
Now the boring stuff. I've got five resolutions for your consideration today. First resolution is the determination to close Abbeyville Road between Wolf and Spieth Road. The next is the determination to close Eastern Road between Wadsworth and Rittman. The third is necessity to close Chippewa Road between Westfield and Friendsville. The fourth is the necessity to close Shaw Road between Lake and Richmond. You know, it'd be easier if I just tell you what roads we're not closing. And then the fifth one is the necessity to close Tower Road between Blake and Sticks Hills. It's construction season, guys.
It's actually the first signs of spring.
It is.
We start closing roads, Dan.
I'll make a motion to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks. All right, Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer. How are you doing today?
Good.
How's it going, Jeremy? Good.
Four resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for professional design services for the Spieth Road Generator Project. This is for construction administration services. Second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with Cunningham and Associates for professional design services for the Liverpool wastewater treatment plant pavement project. These are to prepare construction plans. Third is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for professional design services for the Fenn and March Road Elevated Storage Tank Project. This is to design a bulk water fill station. And the fourth is to rescind Resolution 22-0114 that accepted and awarded the bid for the Heather Hedge Drive Sanitary Sewer Relocation Project and authorize an agreement to cancel said construction project.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you. And Stephen, our facilities director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just one. I have one resolution for your consideration today. It's approving the agreement with Medina County for the Medina County Jail's Stormwater Management and Asphalt Replacement Project. That is for the design services and then construction administration for the jail's parking lot.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
So that's all three areas going up to the JDC all the way down back through the parking lot where they keep the cars?
That is correct. It is not JDC, but yes, the front parking lot. Yeah, it'll be the, I'll call it customers. And then you've got the employee and then all the way around to the salad floor. That is correct.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. All right. Nicole Lee, Human Resources Assistant.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning.
I have one resolution for you today. I have four new hires, one in building, two at JFS, one at the Office for Older Adults, one promotion at JFS, eight rate increases, two at JFS, one at the Office for Older Adults, three in sanitary, and two in maintenance.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And Scott Miller, our county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Scott.
I have 16 resolutions for you today. I'm taking any of these places. The first and second resolutions are amending appropriations. This is being done either through the increase of transfer appropriations. The third and fourth resolutions authorizing expenditure adjustment and revenue adjustment for the highway engineer. The fifth resolution is authorizing a cash transfer. Sixth resolution is authorizing the creation of a garage capital improvement fund for the county sheriff. This is actually constructed garage at the Career Center. And it's for the Take Control Program. It's to house those vehicles that help train young teenage drivers.
That's for the driving pad that's over there. Yep.
The seventh resolution is authorizing the purchase of 6500 gallons of unleaded gasoline. Horse petroleum had a little bit of $3.0802 per gallon. The eighth resolution is authorizing a transfer of inventory between county departments. The ninth resolution is declaring Medina County Properties Access Property and authorizing either the disposal or the sale of the property by auction. The 10th resolution is rescinding Resolutions 21-0857 and 22-034. That's, those resolutions allocated the ARPA funds to the Heather Hedge property, that project, the Lafayette Township. The next resolution is authorizing an agreement with Affordable Heating and Cooling Solutions. This is to replace the HVAC unit in the activity room of Medina County Home. And this is one of those projects that the ARPA funds will be paying for. The 12th resolution is authorizing an agreement with Ohio Department of Public Safety Office of Criminal Justice Services. This is for a grant to the sheriff's office that will provide a single platform for computer technology. This is actually for, I believe it's the tablets that go in the cars. So it's going to be phased in, so there'll be different phases of this project. The next resolution is approving the filing of an F-class temporary permit application. This is to allow beer sales at the Medina County Fair. Next is a resolution authorizing the sale of a drug task force vehicle to Medina County Prosecutor's Office. Will be purchasing the vehicle for about $28,000. And it's also authorizing the drug task force to purchase a replacement vehicle. The 15th resolution is allowing expenses to county officials. And the final resolution is allowing claims and authorizing issuance upon the treasure and settlement of claims in the amount of $612,284.80.
I'll make a motion to approve the 16 resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Scott. Next, we have Denise Testa, our Planning Services Director. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Denise?
Just to continue the resolution run here, I have one resolution for your consideration of accepting and awarding a quote for the township of Brunswick Hills demolition project. So this is a community block, or a community development block grant program. We're actually scheduled for demolition tomorrow. And we're very excited because the rain will actually help keep the dust down.
Oh, good.
Drew?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Are you okay with me?
Sure.
So our subdivision regulations work group is continuing. Our next meeting is May 25th. We are in the midst of reviewing Article 4, which is the major subdivisions, which I think is going to take us probably three meetings rather than the one that we allotted for. But that's okay. We have a great group and we're enjoying that. And I'm sending you the recommended revisions as we're making those recommendations. And we're also sending those recommended revisions to all of our townships as well. For May, we are reviewing two major subdivisions, one large lot, one map amendment, and one text amendment. So our meeting is tomorrow at 6:30 in balcony B. We also already have a May Concept Plan meeting coming through from Hinckley Township. So we're very excited about that. For May, our actual meeting, we have four major subdivisions that we will review, one text and two text amendments. So we're staying busy. We attended, or I attended, the Township Association meeting in April. And our next meeting is May 19th with the guest speaker of Mike Kovak. So we're very excited for that. For our community development block grant, our monitoring process is complete. We had two very minor findings, and we were very proud of that. And that's really a result of Rob Henwood's efforts. We also attended an April 20th Community Development Block Grant training for applications. Applications are now available and on our website. We also sent out about 400 emails to some local organizations that may want to consider applying. We've also scheduled on May 10th at 2:30 a public hearing to answer questions and go over the application. The Lafayette Critical Infrastructure, again, thanks to Dan Becker. We had the bid opening and acceptance for the box culvert and the improvements to the private drives. The tree removal and power line relocation will occur as soon as possible. I don't know if that's already occurred, perhaps? Okay, excellent. And then the bid for the main drive improvements has been posted. We also, Dan and myself and Ty Fullerton from Lafayette met with residents about this project on April 27th to answer their questions. Again, Wadsworth is working to complete their bid docs for a sidewalk replacement in the CDBG. Monville Township is currently reviewing the contracts. And Lodi, the bids have been posted for the fountain improvement and the playground equipment. Are there any questions? Are the grant applications on your site or on our main site? They're on our website, yes. Okay. And Brian is actually going to write a story about it in the next newsletter, so.
Denise, how much money is available for the next round?
For the next round, I believe it's $500,000. And the deadline? The deadline for submission to us is May 27.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Laura Toth, Office for Older Adults.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning.
My papers are. First thing I want to pass out to you is a report, a comparison report between home-delivered meals in 2019 and 2022. I didn't, I have them here, but I didn't put in 2020 and 2021 because they really, to me, do not show the trends that have been happening because they, in both years, the criteria for home-delivered meal was more lax because of the pandemic. And we also had more deliveries because of the supply of shelf-stable foods that we were regularly delivering. So the numbers really don't show as much as these two charts, I felt. So what you can see is that pre-pandemic OOA was averaging about 166 clients a month and 3,193 meal deliveries, so, to those 166 clients. If we look at what's been going on in 2022, which really started in about July 2021, we are averaging 193 clients, so 27 more clients, and 3,588 meal deliveries per month. This is a 16% increase in clients and a 12% increase in meals delivered. What this really affects is the drivers and the outreach department. We haven't gotten any more grant money, so thank goodness. I think I get up every month. Thank goodness for the Human Services Levy for that passage because we are able to supply these meals. Since the supply is not the issue at all. But the perfect number of meals on a delivery route, in my mind, is about 24 or 25. Given the geography of where our drivers have to go on a route, that represents, they can get it done in about three and a half to four and a half hours and in the 10 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. window. So pretty much lunchtime. 10's a little early for lunch, but still. The more time on a route, the longer meals have to be held in our food containers, which plug into the auxiliary outlets in cars. Not to say that it's bad. They do hold temp, but they are sitting there. And it's also the later the lunch delivery. The strain also comes for our outreach department, who's tasked with locating all the meal recipients that aren't home. That's really important. It's essential to what we do. Pre-pandemic, it was one or two calls a day, sometimes no calls a day. And now there's, you know, four or five people we try and chase down that aren't home. They're at a doctor's appointment and forgot to call us. Or somebody came into town and took them, you know, out, and they forgot to call us. And, you know, the reasons go on and on. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that we have growth in our home-delivered meals. I'm continuing to track the numbers to see if they'll keep climbing. If we hit the consistent, like, 195 to 200 meals delivered a day, we may have to add another route. So in the midst of the, the highest we've ever been is 10 routes. That was in the height of the pandemic with a lot of meal deliveries. We're currently at seven, but we may have to find a resting place at eight, which means adding another driver. And I don't know what we'll do about the outreach. We'll figure something out. But again, I just wanted to bring that trend to your attention. Other than that, Senior Day, I'm sorry, do you have any questions on that? Okay.
Nope.
Senior Day of 2022 will take place on Tuesday, May 17th, from 9:00 to 12:00. I will be here next week with a proclamation that, and Commissioner Swedick will present that and say a few words at the event. So thank you. Commissioner Hambley was unavailable. So thank you so much for being there for us. So I hope everybody can make it out. It's free to all seniors. It's free to everyone, open and free to the public. We have no word yet on a really popular program that's coming, probably this month, the Seniors Farmers Market Nutrition Program. Staff has signed up for a webinar, and we should know dates after that, so we'll get them out. Social media, Brian can put them in the newsletter. This is a program that issues $50 in farmers market vouchers to adults over age 60 who meet financial qualifications. We are planning on having that in-person this year. The last two years, it's been a mail-in program. People mail in their applications, and we mail out the vouchers, which is okay, but prior to that, we just, oh, excuse me. Prior to that, we just had a morning at the office where everybody came. And we probably gave out like 98% of the vouchers in that one morning. So it was really a less staff time to accommodate. We didn't do that the last few years because of obvious reason, because of crowds. But I think we'll be able to do it this year. So more to come on that program. Finally, we had a great event on April 23rd. The foundation had a Giving in Style Fashion Show. So again, thanks to Commissioner Swedick for emceeing. And we had local models, some of whom are in the audience today. Denise Testa and Christine Fazio, thank you. The next foundation fundraiser is the Twin Sizzler, which is the annual 4th of July 10K, 5K bike ride. It'll take place 4th of July morning on the square. And it draws over 1,200 runners in the area. So we're really looking forward to that.
Very good.
That's it. Thank you so much. Have a great month.
Thank you. All right. John Burke, John, did you want to come forward with your update on the Fix-It Fund?
I've got a brochure for each of you. This is the hands article. This year is our 20th year of having Fix-It Funds, and we're launching it again this year in partnership with the Westfield Bank. There's our Fix-It Fund article in the hands brochure. And since the commissioners approved this program back in 2002, we've had over $15 million in loans to over 1,000 residents in Medina County. These are low-interest home improvement loans. And to give a little detail for those that'll be watching the commissioners' meeting here, these are fixed-rate loans offered by Westfield Bank. I have 2% below their normal current rate of loans. It's an equity loan. And so last year, that rate was 2.75% fixed. It's a five-year loan. You can borrow a minimum of $5,000 up to a maximum of $50,000. And the origination fee that the bank charges is $150. There's no limit on income on this, so unlike chip and block grants, there's no income limit. But there is a limit on the appraised value of your house. It's got to be $300,000 or less. And that's according to the auditor's records.
And John, just to clarify that, that only is the house, it's not the land?
I was just going to say that, yes. It's only the house. It's not the land. Because you get property that's, you know, 20 acres, they've got one acre. It really affects the value. So we take the value of the land at $300,000 or less, which really makes about 90% of our homes probably can use this type of loan.
So just the value of the house?
Only the value of the house, not the land, not the property itself. Just the value of the house has to be $300,000 or less. The other thing is you can't be delinquent on your taxes either, your property taxes. And there's 18 months you have to complete the work on your house. And almost everything applies to this, interior, exterior improvements. So we're talking, you know, lighting, flooring, plumbing, furnaces, air conditioning, carpeting. On the outside, you could do siding. You can do replacement of windows, doors, patios, decks, driveways, gutters. So almost everything applies. There's only a few things that are not eligible, and that would be hot tubs, swimming pools, satellite dishes, things that are portable that you could take off the property. Any questions on our?
Nope.
Okay. And if you want more information, you can get applications at any of the Westfield Bank branches. Also, you can call our office. Our number is 330-725-9746. And Westfield Bank's number, their main one to call on this, is 330-764-6091.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, John.
Thank you so much. All right. We do have commissioners' resolutions. First off, we have appointing a member to the Medina County Library Board of Trustees. This would, Gail Ostrowski resigned from the Medina County District Library Board of Trustees. To fulfill that vacancy, this would appoint a young man by the name Caleb Parker. Point out Caleb Parker comes very well qualified. He's a graduate, 2014, in Medina High School, local guy. And actually, I think our first-generation Z grad that we've appointed to a board of this. So a young man, juris-doctorate and so forth, local attorney. So a young man, Juris Doctorate and so forth, local attorney.
He's a lawyer.
He's a lawyer, so despite that, we feel he can add something to the board.
He's very impressive.
Indeed. And so this would, this would appoint him to fill the term expiring December 31st, 2026.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion or comments about Caleb?
He'll do a great job.
Yes, you will.
Indeed. Very promising. So roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Well, another reappointing a member to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability. This is, we had for the Brunswick City Member Number Two, expiring March 31st, 2022. And this appoints Howard Elko, reappointing him to that position for a term expiring on March 31st, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Next, we have Commissioner's Resolution approving an intergovernmental service contract to establish the governance structure for Region 19 under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. Did we make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Bill, did you want to explain it?
Yes, this agreement is specifically for Region 19, and it's essentially a governance structure for Region 19. Then Region 19 will report up through and appoint a representative, which is our next resolution, I guess, is to appoint a representative to Region 19. And then Region 19 will get together and vote on a representative that will go up to the One Ohio Board, Donald Columbus. The agreement is not, I would tell you, not 100% agreed to at this point, but I think the structure that's being proffered is 98% there. The one big issue I sense is the county will appoint one representative, being a county commissioner. The way the current proposal reads, then the townships, villages, cities will get together and appoint another representative collectively. I'm not sure exactly how that will happen. And my suggestion back to the group was that we had to change that language so that the county commissioners will appoint a second person to represent those entities and interests. And so we'll see where it goes. We have a Zoom meeting, I think tomorrow afternoon, Mike, is that? Yeah. To have further discussion. My sense is that we'll probably vote on this, agree to it, and then continue to work on it, and then later. So that's where we're at as of today.
Yeah, I follow this, and I know, Billy, you were involved early on in the One Ohio and the lawsuits and so forth, and this is, and once they came to an agreement within the past year, a lot of discussions along, on the CCAO Board of Trustees. And I know, meeting with the attorneys for this, for basically for the state of Ohio, when they came forward, they would continue to suggest that as we develop these boards, that they, we want to make sure, since it's a nonprofit, that it also includes individuals as memberships that are not elected officials. And I think that's one of the concerns is that the counties are, as they develop the regional board, is how do you do that if you continue appointing an elected official at the county level? And then when you have your second seat, it ends up being somebody representing the townships, the cities, and the villages, that's not, ends up being another elected official. Because under the IRS, what is proffered is this is supposed to be a nonprofit, not supposed to look like, exactly like a government body. If they're all elected officials, then how could it literally be a?
Well, I understand that the Region 19 itself is not the nonprofit.
Oh, agreed, okay.
The nonprofit is One Ohio. And, but, I mean, again, each region will appoint a person, whether elected or not, to sit on the One Ohio Board. But your points will take, and if they're all elected officials, it's going to end up being.
Look like a government body. And I think that was the concerns of the attorneys all along, is, because it's still a recommending board as to the process of review. So I think their concern is, and I would agree with you, I think it would make some sense, and I do agree that if the commissioners were involved, not only in that decision of the membership, but also in the second post, if you will, the second slot, likewise reflecting like, well, let's, if we can get the, I'll just say, the local governments, the cities, the villages, and the townships to agree that, okay, you can confirm, but we would recommend it be somebody that's not an elected official. And I think I expressed that, and I think among many counties, the discussion had been involving your Adam Board. Your Adam Board actually involves many of the stakeholders that are going to be involved in the treatment programs that's going to be processed. So it'd be good to have someone that, if you will, reflects those interests, those stakeholders, has that knowledge base, but also not be an elected official, right? I think that's, but I certainly agree with the approach we're taking, and I hope that they keep that in mind as we try to work out the, if you will, the politics of this. We're creating out of whole cloth, a whole group, we just want to make sure it's just not another level of government. It's supposed to be a nonprofit.
Right.
And its overall structure. So I agree with it, but I guess we need to be mindful. Hopefully that we can involve our Adam, at least in our county, be able to involve the Adam Board in these review processes somehow. Yeah. All right. Any other comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And we do have a follow-up, and this would essentially, let me see. Approving the appointment of Medina County Commissioner William Hudson, interim representative from Region 19 to the foundation established by the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding to receive and distribute proceeds from the National Opioid Litigation Settlements.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Okay. Moved in second. This just appoints a bill to represent the Board of Commissioners.
So I just want to clarify, this is an appointment to the Region 19 Board, not to One Ohio.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yep. That's my understanding for this as well.
That's correct. And so what you just read, read that again.
Approving the appointment of Medina County Commissioner William Hudson, interim representative from Region 19 to the foundation established by the One Memorandum of Understanding to receive and distribute proceeds from the National Opioid Litigation Settlement. So the title is, misidentifies that.
Yes. It should be to appoint to the Region 19 Board, not to the Foundation.
Okay.
I will rescind my motion.
Okay. Approving the, so the title, is the title need replaced, or does it, the verbiage here?
I think it's just the title, but Mike, here.
Yeah, I think so too. I think the title needs modified. Do you have a proposed amendment on the title, Lynn? Seems like the text is right.
It just needs to be an appointment to the Region 19 Board, leave the part about the Foundation out.
Yeah, so.
So it would be an amendment to the title?
Right.
To reapproving the appointment of Medina County Commissioner William Hudson.
Interim representative?
Representative.
Not interim.
Okay, not interim.
To be the representative of the Board of Commissioners in Medina County to serve on the Region 19 Governance Board.
Did you get that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So I would add to you, the title.
Okay. All right. And Kelly Neal moved to amend?
Moved to amend.
Amend the title? And you'll second to amend the title? We'll take a roll call on the title amendment, and then on the issue itself, so.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. And with that amendment, okay.
Make a move to approve.
Second?
Second, yes.
Second. All right. Move to approve as amended in the title. Any discussion on that? Make it perfectly clear, this is for the Region 19 Governance Board. Got it. Okay. Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Sorry about that, but we have to have clarity here, especially on the titles. All right. We also have a commendation. Commissioners wish to commend the following 26 students for graduating from Leadership Exploration and Development Institute, class of 2022. Jonathan Allen, Beth Ann Brigadier, Alyssa Flanagan, Brian Fraser, Mackenzie Gilbert, Tanner Hampshire, Brandy Hughes, Rihanna Carusus, Tara Laflame, Alexis Lee, Jelone Lockhart, Ashley Powell, Alex Midday, Evelyn Fan, Roxanna Rathbrenn, Karen Reel, Philip Rickaby, Bonnie Romano, Robin Serwatka, Miranda Slowick, Joanne Swim, Kelsey Vasicek, Brooke Went, Darren Weinbruner, Sebastian Workman, and Jenny Young. There's not requiring motions or seconds, but this does provide a resolution of commendations to those individuals. We congratulate them. We also, Commissioners wish to commend the following 40 students for graduating from Leadership Medina County Signature Class of 2022. Renee Acom, Shannon Alborn, Heidi Armentraut, Melissa Augustine, John Baker, Carrie Beller, Joseph Byrne, Rebecca Clark, Lindsay Conrad, Greg Davis, Dennis DiCamillo, Kevin Denny, Nathan Eppink, Tad Fitch, Jason French, Katie Furist, Jeffrey Garitza, Chad Kitts Miller, Denise Clag, Brian LeFerrac, Natalie Longjack, Jody McInnis, Jessica Medbeck, Stephanie Mueller, Allison Nazo, Anne Nelson, Carrie Price, Allison Prieb, Matthew Rosavi, Deborah Reeves, Easton Saltzman, Andrew Schuler, Tiffany Shelton, Tara Sick, Robert M. Q. Starcher, Anthony M. Strazzo, Connie Surick, Bradford Toth, Christine Van Osdale, and Adam J. Vino. Also a commendation to them. Congratulations. All right. And next, we open up for public comment. No? Okay. Next, okay, we have open up for discussion session. Start up, Scott.
Chief Army's getting ready to jump to his.
He must always.
So I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. I know I haven't given you an update on the budget recently, so I wanted to do that quickly. Our revenues as of the end of April were about $18,800,000. That's about a million dollars more than last year at this time. And our expenses are at $13,324,000. Last year at this time, they were $14,410,000, so we're about a million dollars less in expenses. The main reason for that is last year, we had a 27 pay, so we had three pays in January, which is a million dollars. So revenue-wise and expense-wise, we're doing well. We're actually ahead of our budgeted revenues. We're currently at about 40% of our budgeted revenues, and we're only at 28% of our budgeted expenses. So sales taxes up about $561,000. Property taxes down $195,000, but that's because we had to move some of the property taxes from the general fund to the debt service fund to cover the cost of the debt issuance for the courthouse. So property tax-wise, $195,000 is down, considering that we have a $1.4 million debt payment, is pretty good. One of the reasons is we were able to pay off debt early last year. Again, we're looking to pay off another bond issuance early this year. So that'll really almost cover the cost of the debt payment.
For the courthouse?
For the courthouse, yeah. So we're doing well. As far as the courthouse goes, I don't know if you, obviously you've seen it, they're still, they're moving along well. The studs installation on the west, they're installing the studs, exterior studs, south and west side. As you can see, they're doing the sheathing of the courthouse. Cast stone was actually, should be delivered today, and they should be starting to put that up today. So hopefully we'll see some cast stone going up on the outside. Interior, they're still spraying the fireproofing on the second floor. The cement block is completed throughout the courthouse. They're doing rough wall-ins on the first floor, and they're ongoing with the barrier installation on the roof.
Scott, any idea when the windows, windows and doors will be in exterior?
That I don't know. Do you know, Stephen? We haven't really, we haven't talked about that.
No, they just took a lot of fraying on the inside. I can't imagine the windows going on until after the facade is up. So I'm assuming that the facade will have to come up, so the exterior brick will have to go on after the cast stone. So cast stone come on, and then bricks start coming in, and then I'm assuming windows will go on. They'll probably put temporary windows in, or plastic, as you can see, some of the windows are getting cut. Probably do that first.
Okay. So the contingency, so you know, when we made some major, what I would consider major adjustments to the 1841 courthouse recently, where we moved some walls around, which are pretty, are minor, but we are putting in three bathrooms. We're putting in a men's restroom, a women's restroom, and then a family restroom. And we had estimated those restrooms about $150,000. We started to get some quotes in from the plumbers and the Tyler's for that, and it's going to be more than that. So probably in excess of $200,000. So it's going to be significantly more. So that's going to tap into our contingency a little bit. It actually brings us down to about $438,000 in remaining contingency. Now, we haven't done the volume engineering yet on the bathrooms. I know that Gilbane is working with the contractor, their contractors, so there should be some volume engineering. So I expect that $438 to actually increase some. But I'm very thankful that we got the bids when we did months ago versus trying to get bids now for the construction, because it would be, I think our courthouse would be significantly at a higher cost. So any questions on the courthouse?
No.
Schedule's still the same. We still plan to be completed in December. We did, the bids for the benches are due tomorrow. I will be, I'm meeting with the company hopefully today. I sent an email yesterday to talk about jury chairs. We found a company that can provide a really good price on jury chairs. And then we were working with WB Mason to, on the design of the furniture, so I expect to have that hopefully within the next couple of weeks also. So, okay.
In addition to getting the bids out, the interest rates are, they announced again, they're going up again, so.
Yeah.
It was good. You did good.
I talked to our underwriter the other day, and he said that just in the very first year, if you, if we did, issued now, first year interest cost would be over $500,000 greater than what we paid in one year. So.
Very good. Thank you.
Percentage completion, approximately in relation to draw?
We, I think we were at 28 in March, yeah. I looked the other day on the last invoice that we got from Gilbane. I didn't see a percentage of completion on there. So I'm not sure exactly where we're at, but it's north of the 28% now.
Total draw?
Total draw.
We were at 900,000 back then, I believe.
Yeah, total draw, we are at, I think, so, well, total into the project, I think we were at seven. That includes permits and inspections and those types of things. So seven out of about 30, the estimate caused about 30.
I had 900 down at March 12th at that meeting.
I think you're talking about two different things. So, Scott, on the actual application for payment?
Yeah.
That Gilbane submits, there should be a percentage completion?
There is, yes.
And the total cost, how much is paid this application, how much is paid in the prior application? So I think that's what Stan wants to know.
Exactly. That's what I'm used to. I'm used to working with a Gantt chart and seeing that each time there's a draw.
Yeah. Yeah, again, I don't have that, I mean, I'm not going to guess at what that is, but if I can get that to.
Just like to have that in the report when possible. And with the $500,000, if there were something that's still set aside, is that primarily for the old courthouse? Or is there still contingency for the new courthouse?
That is entirely for the old courthouse. We did talk to the judges last week, or actually the magistrates last week, and we are going to have to do some wiring for some directories. When you walk in the courtroom, there'll be a monitor on the wall that will have a directory to the different areas of the courthouse, as well as messages, so if the courthouse is closing at noon, you'll be able to put that up. And then the common police courts will have the dockets on monitors, so people can go in, they can see dockets and where the different hearings are being held. So we do have to install some wiring and data for that, but I don't expect that that's going to be a minor cost.
So let me clarify your question, Stan.
Please.
So the contingency, the $438,000, whatever it is, is a?
Is already assigned.
No, no. Is a, is a project contingency. It is not for a specific part of the courthouse. So if we, like, the monitors, if we need to make an adjustment in the new portion of the courthouse, that money is available. If we have adjustments in the 1841 section of the courthouse, that money's available. So I just, I just want to clarify it, because.
Yeah, I did not understand that, but my conversation was.
Well, the majority of that contingency, I mean, the new courthouse, those, we've been through all the BIMs.
The hard stuff is done. So there shouldn't really be a lot of changes in the new.
Yeah, there won't be, any changes in the new will be very, very minor. There'll be a switch, flipping a door, or like I said, just some minor wiring changes. So the $438,000 contingency that's remaining, yes, that is pretty much, if it's used, it will be used on the 1841 courthouse.
All right.
On the 1849 courthouse.
1841 courthouse primarily, yes.
Right.
That's my understanding. My concern was you're only 28% completion, you've used 70% of the contingency fund, and you still got 70% to go. In the private sector, that would be unheard of. We expect to have either more contingency or be planning to borrow more money. But that's all my, that's it.
And I understand also that we also, we've used very little of the contractor contingencies, and we used none of Gilbane's contingency. and we used none of Gilbane's contingency. So, there's those other contingencies that are out there that should be, the $438,000 be used, and I don't know if it will. I know that we've been, they've gone through, they've done the inspections of the 1841. They've got a pretty good idea of what they're up against. But as you know, when you start tearing out walls, you may find something that's unexpected. But I still think that because the new courthouse, everything is pretty much finalized with some minor adjustments here or there that we make. So, the 1841 courthouse is what that money will be used for.
Do you have to be in the contingency for any overtime? Because I noticed they're working a lot of Saturdays. I work on Saturday morning, so I see them because they walk down my, our parking lot.
That, my understanding is that was all built into the bids.
We've got a 10:30 hearing we need to conduct, so if any other questions, Scott, where we can answer those for you. Jeremy?
All right. Just a couple of things here.
Sure.
On Saturday, Kowana Skies will be installing, one of the new commercial scales finally came in, so they will be shutting down the outbound scale on Saturday. And then, we plan, we're scheduled to have the weights and measures out on Monday morning to certify the new scale. So, hopefully, Monday morning, it should be ready to go. The inbound scale is scheduled to be installed on the 21st, which is, we'll do another Saturday. So, hopefully everything will go nice and smooth, right? And then, also, the 8700, I remember sharing a picture of the wall that was kind of pushed out, the brick wall there, that is in the process of getting repaired now. So, and then, also, Columbia Road, the, we're actually wrapping everything up and starting final grading. So, I plan a meeting with the contractor out later this week, so I'll grab some photos of what, hopefully, everything is, will be completed here in the next few weeks. So, that's it.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Good, good. Stephen, do you have anything else for us? John, Denise, anyone else? Yes.
Thank you for appointing our new board member from Medina County District Library. We really look forward to working with Mr. Parker. And the library really does appreciate your efforts, because I miss sometimes when the time we kind of make you guys busy and ask you to quickly appoint two board members recently. So, just thank you for your work on that.
No, you're welcome, and I'm glad we have some such outstanding people. It was, we had a number of individuals, six, who we reviewed, all good people, and it's sometimes hard to choose, but Caleb, I'm sure will do a good job for us. So, but glad we have so many people, good quality individuals, willing to serve for, you know, those, basically, no compensation, they're volunteer, and really, you know, overlooking and taking fiduciary responsibility for our outstanding institutions. So, very thankful we've got good people willing to volunteer like that. So, we do have another item for discussion that's in our packet regarding the Medina County Lodge Excise Tax Code of Regulations. This, I'll point out, our discussions regarding the, what we call the hotel tax or excise lodging tax, this is an endeavor, we learned that a resolution that was adopted in 1990, which levied the tax, there was no subsequent regulations that were provided for the administration of the, the collection of that. And given that oversight, the attempt was to bring that into. So, when we talk about this, it's not a new tax. These taxes have been in existence since the 1990s, and we're making very clear the regulations. My thanks to Medina County Economic Development Corporation and the Convention and Visitors Bureau for working on this, as well as, I understand, Mike, that you, the prosecutor's office working on this and reviewing it likewise to update it. This was for discussion. Scott, did you have any comments on this one that you wanted to provide, or?
I did not. I sent in your notes to Kathy and Beth yesterday.
Yeah, I didn't see them here. So, yep, yep. And if you had that, it leaks, obviously, covers all the areas that we need to. I know they had outside legal counsel likewise help provide and draw that up, and I know that Treasurer Burke had reviewed this as well. So, any questions or comments on this? So, our thought is to put this on the agenda for next week.
For next week.
For next week, okay. So, we have anything that comes up, any other inputs, just to let people know that this is, but pointing out this is not a new tax. This is just making sure that we, the administrative capability to, for collection of that, also for anybody that inadvertently or questions the collection of it, overpayment and so forth, there's a process for them to appeal and obviously have that considered. So, anyway, so, all right. Do you have anything, Bill?
Just very quickly, we had some folks in here a few weeks ago talking about the application of brine to.
Yes.
Roads and highways. And so, I contacted ODOT District 3 and talked with them there and got some information. And ODOT actually makes its own solution.
Right.
They take salt, mix it with water, and that's what they put in their trucks. They are not using any sort of fracking brine or brine from oil drilling operations. So, I don't see that we need to take a position on any of the bills that they brought up. There is a, another House Bill, 579, that's pending, that would actually prohibit the application of brine to roads and streets and so forth. So, I don't think that we need to take any action.
Okay.
I had our Public Information Officer contact the government entities within Medina County, and nobody is using the Aqua Salina, none of the townships, none of the cities.
Well, an Aqua Salina is actually not oilfield brine. It is a concoction, a mixture of calcium chloride, sodium chloride, magnesium chloride, and other things that they make themselves. So, it's not the radioactive brine from oilfield.
Okay, well, clear that up. So, at this point, just to make clear, the board's not going to be taking any, considering any further action, I guess, until such time as, see what the legislature does with the bills. Last I checked, they've had hearings, and that's as far as it's gone, and not seen any committee activity whatsoever on this. So, okay. With that, anything else you wanted to bring up?
Nope, that's it.
Colleen?
Thank you.
Anybody else for the good of the order? Okay, I'll, we entertain a motion to adjourn, and then we have a public hearing at 10:30.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second. Just a reminder, before we take the vote, today is an election day. If you haven't voted, if you're watching live, please do. Remember, all votes matter and all votes count. All right. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?